...call July 23rd, 2025, regular board meeting of the fifth and community high school district, one hundred boards to board. May I have a roll call?
Matu?
Here.
McCulloch?
Here.
Goodrich?
Yeah.
Miller?
Yep.
Lewis?
Here.
Radzinski?
Here.
Figaroa?
Here.
We have a call. Please join me in reciting the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance, the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and for all. Sam, please read our Fenton mission, beliefs, and bison way statements.
Absolutely. Fenton mission statement, cultivate successful, passionate, empowered learners through rigor, relevance, and relationships. Fenton belief statement, successful, passionate, empowered learners thrive when we provide a safe, caring, and welcoming environment. Diversity, equity, and inclusion unify our community. School and home collaborate as one. We champion innovative teaching and engaged learning with state-of-the-art facilities. We infuse social-emotional learning into academics and culture. We prepare students to fulfill their civic responsibility. We immerse students in authentic life experiences. The Bison Way, students and adults at Fenton High School create a safe, caring, empathetic environment where we believe in each other, respect diversity, communicate openly, grow together, and hold each other to high expectations to become the leaders and innovators of the future.
The next item is recognitions. Kate?
Good evening. I'd like to call up Elizabeth Delgado and Coach Dave Mello. All right. A few of our athletic teams continue to compete into the early summer, softball being one of them. And in June, Izzy Delgado was selected by the Illinois Softball Coaches Association for their All-State third team. This is her second year in a row receiving All-State recognition. Last year, Izzy was selected while filling in as catcher for a large portion of the season, and this year she received an All-State honors while playing her natural outfield position. Being All-State at two very different positions is a huge accomplishment and a testament to her athleticism. This is also a bittersweet moment for us because Izzy graduated in May, and so we're really proud she's going to be joining other Fenton alum at Triton College playing softball. She has left her mark here at Fenton in her four years. Izzy now ranks in the top four at all Fenton softball players in the following category: hits, doubles, triples, runs scored, and runs batted in. So that is something. I also have to give a shout out to her cheering section, who is always there to support her. And so you always know when the Delgados are around. Here's a fun fact, this is actually the seventeenth consecutive year that one or more Fenton softball players have been awarded All-State honors. So that's incredible. Here to tell us more about Izzy is Coach Mello, but before I turn it over to him, I want to tell you a little bit about Coach Mello, too. Just before this 2025 season, the Illinois Softball Coaches Association also named Coach Mello as sectional number four Coach of the Year for last year's 2024 season. They praised Coach Mello for his long-term success at Fenton, including two conference champions, four regional championships, and the many All-State players he's developed, including Izzy. So I'll turn it over to Coach Mello. Congratulations.
Thank you. Everything that she just read there about Izzy is what it's all about. The stuff about me is because of athletes like Izzy that I've been fortunate enough to coach while here. First of all, I'd like to thank the board for this wonderful recognition. It's great to be up here just about every year, as we do have a lot of All-State athletes that I'm fortunate enough to coach. Thank you to the administration for all the support in not only softball, but basketball as well. Thank you to the Delgado family for blessing us with the chance to coach Izzy. And then we have Bella coming up behind her. And most importantly, on my behalf and my coaches, a thank you to Izzy for four amazing years that she gave to us. And I know Principal Ward touched on a lot of the numbers, so I'm not going to go back to those. But as coaches, it was an absolute pleasure to coach Izzy for four years. And her and I have talked about this a few times, but I still remember standing at the front door, as she does live literally right across the street. So I was watching her walk to an open gym, and I was standing there holding the door open. And I had already known her through the basketball season, and I just asked her, you know, hey, what are you looking to do in the spring for softball in terms of level? And she was like, I'm going to play varsity. And that was before her freshman softball season. So you love to have someone with that confidence that knew right away. You know, one thing that wasn't mentioned that we really believe is a true measure of Izzy's character and her competitiveness is there's a lot of softball games every year, usually thirty-five to thirty-seven. And we do run a pretty disciplined program in terms of if you miss practice, then you're probably not going to play the next day. Obviously, if you're home from school, you cannot come to the game and play. Izzy is our first player in my seventeen full seasons that we've been able to play that she played in every single game for four years. Never, never missed a game. I don't believe she ever missed a practice, even when there were times that we told her, like, hey, it's okay if you take a day. She still showed up, which is a true testament to Izzy. And as I said, we were honored to have Izzy in our program. She will be missed greatly. One good thing is that she will be ten, fifteen minutes away at Triton College, and we can get out to see her play. And the other really good thing, and I have something here for Izzy, is that every time our program, our team, the school, anybody goes out to our field, and I didn't want to open this yet, I probably should have, but anytime people go out to our field, they will see Izzy's number-two jersey is retired now, and it'll be hanging on the left-field fence out there at our field. So this will go on for next year. And I will turn it over to Izzy, if she'd like to say a few words.
Yeah. Oh, wow. Okay. I really want to thank Coach Mello for everything he's done for me. From day one, I knew that he was going to be the coach that was going to get me through everything, through life itself, and he's really been the coach for me. Everybody says how they, like, don't like their high school coaches and blah, 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 but I can't say anything bad about mine. He is truly, like, the best person I know, and I hope these girls can see his potential and see, like, how he's going to coach the rest, obviously. I also want to thank my travel coaches. They helped me work every day to get so much better than what I am today. And they've helped me through life situations. They've helped me through game situations. They always help me get stronger, and I really owe most of my ability and skill to them. Like, oh, sorry. The next people I want to thank are all my teammates who have been there for me from day one, all of my seniors that have just graduated. They are all such sweet girls, and we had a really good group from basketball going into softball. It was always just us and just having that reassurance that I have my people, and it was just really nice to have them. And then lastly, I'd like to thank my family. Obviously, they do everything for me. They've got me through so much of this. They've got me through so much of this. They pay for everything. They literally, like, support everything I do. All these people here go to every single one of my games, like, no matter what, they make a, they make the chance and go there for me, and thank you. But yeah, I just want to say thank you to all of these people, because without them, I don't know how we get through this, and how I would get through life and softball and everything I've been through. And I'm just really appreciative of them. Thank you.
When we come off our picture?
Let's go there? Okay, that's easier. We're going that way. Start to move the chairs, we're going that way.
That's a good call.
We're going over here?
See you over there. Everybody squeeze in.
Why don't you move to the side to balance out the things? There we go. All right. Here is. Is there a picture?
Congratulations. You guys are awesome. See you in the fall.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. I'll read you displaying the humidity. No public comments, and we'll move on next to informational items. Sam?
Okay, very good. As you can see, we have a wide variety of topics here this evening, but we're pleased to introduce representatives from HYA. Tonight, we're going to have an informational item about the selection of the superintendent search organization for the superintendent twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. Just a little recap for everybody. We did have a Board of Education Special Committee meeting on July the eighth to hear and review presentations from three prospective search organizations. The committee was tasked with recommending one organization to the full board, and the committee voted unanimously for HYA, or Hazard, Young, and Attia and Associates. And so there will be an action item later in the meeting, but we'd like to introduce Carrie Federero and Lynn Burks from HYA. They have a short presentation, and also there's a handout in your binder that has a little bit more information if so desired.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
It's nice to be back. Lynn and I are very excited about the potential to work and partner with you to select your next educational leader. Thank you for putting our presentation up. For the board members that were on the committee, my name is Carrie, Carrie Federero. I'm a retired superintendent from DuPage. I was superintendent at Cass sixty-three for fifteen years. I retired back in 2020. I'm at the higher ed level, part-time as an adjunct in Ed Leadership Department. I'm also an HR specialist. And I'll let Lynn introduce herself.
Yes. So nice to meet you and honored to be nominated. I'm Lynn Burks. I was a twenty-four-year school board member, but then also in higher education. So I was in the HR office as well and responsible for a staff of three thousand. So I also still do HR executive services at the proprietary sector as well.
All right. Just, we're not going to go through all the slides in detail like we did to the committee. We're only going to talk for about five to seven minutes, and then please, if you have questions, ask either during our five-to-seven-minute presentation or at the end. We compliment you for looking seriously at us. We believe we're a very comprehensive, professional, executive search firm. We've been in the business for a long time, since nineteen eighty-seven. I was just starting, and Lynn was in first grade back then. But we are not an inter-base search firm. We have a brick-and-mortar building. We have people that answer the phones during the regular business hours. We have an IT department. We are a comprehensive search firm, so we compliment you for looking at utilizing us in what we believe is your most important decision. And if you hadn't had a chance, please go to our website, you know, in addition to our HYA by the numbers there. Go to our website, hysearch.com, and take a look to get to know our firm a little bit better.
We're also, we've worked with sixteen hundred school districts across the country since nineteen eighty-seven, and we're proud. We have a ninety-four percent satisfaction rate. That is a long time. We also have the longest longevity in the business as well, and we're very proud of that. We'll just briefly go through our signature search process, and then what we really wanted to talk to the full board about was really the first stage, which is what we call the engage phase. And so Carrie and I are going to park here, we're going to be regulars, and we're really going to understand your needs. We're hoping to be able to schedule a working meeting with the board very soon, and through that working meeting, we'll create a work plan, we'll create a schedule. So we'll basically even schedule the first interviews and the second interviews, so everything is on your calendar. This is wave one. You want to get started as soon as possible. So you are in the best position, you are very proactive to be at this point, so you want to take advantage of that. So it's this working meeting. And then we're going to meet with you, we're going to have you bring your calendars, and Carrie and I are going to meet with each board member one-on-one. We'll also meet with any staff, community members, anybody you would like us to have a one-on-one. We're going to have a survey that we're also going to deploy, and then we're also going to have a series of focus groups. And at that working planning meeting with the board, we'll solidify all of those stakeholder groups. And it's fluid. At some point, you may want to include another community. You may want us to go out into the community. I know you have several populations that may not feel comfortable coming to the school or filling out a survey, and we may need to go to them, and Carrie and I will make those accommodations. And then really, we're going to start recruiting as soon as possible, because again, we want to be able to leverage this wave one. We'll start recruiting in August. We'll talk a little bit about this leadership profile that we will be creating over the next month or so with you, and then we'll engage in a six-month national search. We have sixty-six hundred candidates in our system already. You'll be part of our newsletter, you'll be part of our social media. You know, our goal is to be able to find the best leader possible that fits your culture. And it might be somebody right next door, it might be someone halfway across the country. But we're going to aggressively recruit to be able to bring eventually a set of slate of candidates, a robust set of candidates that we believe can do the job. Then the board will take that first slate and take it down to a final slate, and hoping to have a leader somewhere around the end of the year to be able to start the transition process in January. Did I miss anything?
No, you've got a nice summary with that. And once you select your new superintendent to start next July, July one, you don't get rid of us. We're going to stick on you like glue, and we're going to help set up a transition for the six months with the existing superintendent and the new superintendent. And then we're going to provide a board workshop with the new superintendent and you to get a nice, solid foundation. And then we're going to be there to support both you and the new superintendent going into next year, because we want you and this person to be successful. And then if you go beyond the year, you still have our phone number, and you still have our email, and you call us two and a half years down the road and go, and we have an issue we're dealing with. We are more than happy to continue supporting you. Our goal is not to do a one-and-done in Fenton. Our goal is to develop a relationship with you and give you an opportunity to see how we can support a school district, so if you have future needs, whether it's workshops, whether it's consulting or so on, you would consider us. And so you're our client. If you approve us, and we would value that, and we're going to do everything we can to exceed your expectations.
Yeah. And this is a little about, we will walk through the board, we will walk through this process with the board, and we'll schedule this out. So this is really our robust research-based mixed method design. Well, we'll have the survey, we'll designate a point person with the board that Carrie and I can have direct contact with, we'll also work with the board secretary to kind of work on some logistics. But this also will be central to the planning meeting and the board's input about how you want to go about engaging our stakeholders. And we spent a lot of time creating this plan, and then Carrie and I spent a lot of time executing this plan, because this is the most important part of the process.
So if you approve us, what we would need is a meeting, and that's our nuts and bolts organizational meeting, as soon as possible. A lot of boards tie it on to other meetings that they have. They have a committee of the whole, or they do a before-board meeting, or at the end of the board meeting. We also work virtually, if that works best for you, but that's what we would need for our first step.
Be about an hour and a half, about an hour and a half, because we also want to make sure there's plenty of time for questions, and everybody understands kind of the plan moving forward. So about ninety minutes. And then as you think about, we don't want to be too presumptuous, we know we have to vote formally, but we also want to get your one-on-one interviews scheduled as soon as possible, because we spend about an hour and a half, two hours with each board member.
And that's all we have, and we're more than happy to answer questions, any questions you might have.
Thank you very much, and I'll reach out to you later this evening, so.
Thank you. It's good to see.
Thank you.
It's nice meeting the full board.
Very nice job recognizing students.
Do you like that? Yes.
We had tears on our eyes.
Yeah, that was powerful, for sure. I wish, I wish I had a group of people following me like she did. Jeez.
That's what it's all about.
Yeah, that's right. Okay. Kate, level up.
All right. So we have five weeks until the first day of school, a little bit over five weeks. So we're knee-deep into preparation on a lot of different levels, but I wanted to share with you, our theme for the year is level up, every day, every class, every bison. So we felt like we had a really strong year last year, and now it's time to even push things farther. So we're looking at this as, obviously, the addition of the STEM wing is leveling up. We want to level up our academics, attendance, extracurricular participation, pride, student spirit. I've already turned this over to our SCL and our PBIS coordinators, and they do a lot of student programming, and they took this idea of level up, and they want to do a lot of gamification, which we think the kids are really going to like, so different incentives and things like that, so playing off of some of, like, the old-school video game stuff. So I think that'll be fun. This is a packed schedule of events for our first two months, and really, August, we don't start till the twenty-fifth, so you can see how many things we have starting right from the get-go. This was sent home to all of our parents in the registration packet, so that all families have this. And I'm just going to highlight a couple of things that we have coming up in the next couple of weeks. So really, where we start to see students coming into the building is on August thirteenth. That's our supply schedule pickup date. It used to be textbook pickup, textbook pickup, but there's really not as many textbooks anymore. A couple, but it's really, they come in to get whatever they need. So we're having it for one day, from eight to three. We're going to try to get as many of our students in that day as possible. If they're on vacation or something like that, we're always open otherwise, but we're moving it to a one-day event, which we think is going to work really well. One of the things that we started last year, which was a huge success, was the Bison Sneak Peak Night. So when we started this last year, it's an open-house event where students can come before the first day of school, they can walk their schedule, they can go around the building, they can ask administrators questions. Last year, it was really focused more for the incoming freshmen, but this year, we're going to really blast it for all students, because nobody really knows where they're going with the new STEM wing. So this will really be the first opportunity for our students and families to really see the STEM wing. So we're excited, we're really going to play this up, we're going to encourage as many kids to come so that they feel more at ease with this addition and figuring out where they're going to go, and they're just going to be so excited when they see it. So those are two things. Our freshmen come in, freshman orientation is August nineteenth. We're really excited, so we do a half-day freshman orientation to really set the stage with them, get them excited, make them feel comfortable, help them meet some new friends. And the stars of that show are really our LINK crew, and LINK crew is a group of upperclassmen who serve as mentors. We are very excited, this year we have over one hundred upperclassmen who have volunteered to do this, this is record-breaking. So just showing, again, kind of that leveling up, we already have kids who are just so excited to get involved and serve as mentors, so we're excited about that. I'm going to turn it over to Steph to talk a little bit about teachers and staff.
Okay. So we also have eight new certified staff members that we need to get used to the building and used to all of the Fenton ways of doing things. So the way that we run new teacher orientation is three half-days, so it will be the Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday before the two Teacher Institute days on Thursday and Friday. These eight folks will come in, and in the morning, we have different sessions for them with different people in the building to try to get them information about, here's how you do this, and here are these people, and just trying to get them acclimated to different aspects of the building. And then other things that they do that are maybe a little bit more fun than some of that, we have some student-led building tours that take place during that time, also led by LINK crew students, so they're big workhorses at the beginning of the year. And then we help them with getting acclimated to technology, we talk to them about professional development. Every new teacher is given a mentor, it's a veteran teacher, who is somebody outside of their department typically, that they can go to. There are reciprocal observations that happen during that time, where they go see their mentor teach, their mentor comes in and sees them teach, just to have somebody kind of in your corner, somebody that you know, that you can feel like you can talk to. So those people come on that day, and we go to lunch after that. And then probably the biggest highlight, everybody raves about this every year, we take the new teachers on a bus, and we have a whole route of hotspots in Wooddale and Bensonville that we feel like they would benefit from seeing. And typically, John Aguilar has done a really nice job of putting together a very detailed tour, but his daughter Lita is moving in on that day to college. So Josh Payton, who is a Bensonville past resident, and he's an alum of Fenton, will be running that bus tour this year. So those are the big, the fun things, I guess. Okay. And then on Thursday and Friday that week, on Thursday, we have certified staff only, so that's teachers. And they come in, basically, they get a welcome, we're going to go over building priorities with them that apply to their teaching jobs. This year, we've narrowed it down to four things, but big things. Tenance and behavior are focused for our cohorts. We typically have a different topic every year. This one probably will span two years, we're imagining, but it's disciplinary literacy for the year. And then we will be kind of reimagining what PLC time looks like a little bit, and we have some new ideas for EL student support that we will be running teachers through on that day. Our keynote speaker is Dr. Mike Mandarino, who is kind of a local expert in disciplinary literacy. He is a professor at NIU in the Curriculum and Instruction Department, but he's also kind of a fan favorite around here. There have been a lot of teachers who have attended a lot of sessions over the years with him, and there's already a lot of buy-in with him, so I think- And then we will be kind of re-imagining what PLC time looks like a little bit. And we have some new ideas for EL student support that we will be running teachers through on that day. Our keynote speaker is Dr. Mike Mandarino, who is kind of a local expert in disciplinary literacy. He is a professor at NIU in the Curriculum and Instruction Department, but he's also kind of a fan favorite around here. There have been a lot of teachers who have attended a lot of sessions over the years with him, and there's already a lot of buy-in with him, so I think people are very excited to have him in. So that's day one. Yes?
Could you help me out again?
Sure.
PLC.
That's professional learning communities. So teachers are in PLCs usually by the core course that they teach. So in the English department, for example, there's an English I, an English II, an English III, and an English IV PLC. And that's similar in every department. So teachers belong to one or two of those, and it's a group they meet with during our Monday release time in the morning. And all just different types of things happen during that time. So we're going to kind of structure that a little bit more than it's been structured in the past to kind of get some outcomes that we're looking for with the disciplinary literacy and some feedback cycles and things like that with teachers.
Thank you.
Yeah. And then day two, that's everybody. That's when we have the full staff here. So that's going to be support staff, bus drivers, everybody, and the teachers again. That'll be Sam's welcome on day two. There will be some district updates. We will do our staff administrator and student stories. That's become kind of a tradition at Fenton. I would say about 10 years, maybe a little longer even, but we always have a staff member, an administrator, and a student who tells their story, their personal story. And people have really come to enjoy this time, so we've got people lined up for that already. We have an all-staff training because we've, last year we did an in-person training, and we've kind of decided that we would like to do that each year, so this year it's going to be legal considerations for student discipline. And then finally, that day will cap off with various union meetings. So that's what our first two days for teachers and staff will look like.
And we're hoping a lot of it can happen in the STEM Wing.
Yeah.
How long is the induction program for new teachers, since you're bringing up new staff?
Yeah, it's the entire year. And then they have a second-year program as well.
And so the second year, they're involved with an instructional coach or supported in some way?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, very good. Lot of exciting events coming up. It's going to creep up on us here soon. Okay, Brian is in the audience. Looks like the only person in the audience, that's Brian. It's a good if you didn't know who he was. We're really excited, obviously, about the STEM Wing. We've been talking about it for a long time. It's really coming along, I would say, in its final stages. And I'd like to start out just by reminding everyone, August the 14th, 5:00 p.m., we have our ribbon-cutting ceremony, and obviously, you're all invited to attend. We'll have some light refreshments. We've been inviting other people, and people are reserving for that event. And so obviously, it's going to be a joyous day when we anticipate everything will be done and cleaned and stuff like that. So with that, we're going to turn it over to Brian to go through some more details on the STEM Wing.
And furnished? Furnished also?
Yes.
Furniture's here.
Yeah, the furniture is ordered in the vicinity, right? Yeah, so.
So I'm Brian Courtney, Senior Project Manager with Gilbain Construction. Some upcoming activities, as Sam pointed out, it's kind of in the final stages. So final cleaning, all the spaces this coming Friday. Actually, I had punches luckily, we're going to do that Tuesday with the architect after our OAC meeting. Appliances are coming. And then next week, Monday, final fire pump inspection, booster pump inspection. Tuesday, we've got final fire marshal, fire alarm, and building inspections, which is kind of a third-party. And then Thursday of next week, final elevator inspection. And then ROE was, you know, basically the state. So the final, final inspection scheduled for Wednesday, August 6th, and then occupancy from there. And then Thursday, August 7th, starting to install all the furniture. The furniture, at Case Point, is going to start getting delivered. They want to start delivering this week. We're just going to stage it off-site for right now until we get all the final cleaning done. Then ribbon-cutting on August 14th at 5:00 p.m., then obviously, August 25th, first day of school. So this is a drone video update from last Wednesday. If you walk through again today, it's changed.
Totally different.
A lot, since last Wednesday, so. So next, I just threw some progress photos in, too. So there's a shot from the, the one on the left is the picture from the north looking south that has the balcony and the new entrance. And then the one on the right-hand side is looking toward the stadium. That's the new, where the new gate is going. You can see the masonry piers and the ticket booth there. Kind of move on. And then top left, that's a view from the balcony into the football stadium. And then second picture over is a view from inside the first floor, looking out toward that entrance. The far-right picture is the corridor going out toward door number three. On the right-hand side, you can see there's a display case there for the, is that?
Computer science.
Computer science, yes. So they're going to have some display there. Bottom-left picture is the entrance coming, when you come in the entrance on the first floor from the north, that's looking in toward the STEM Wing. The middle picture on the bottom there, that's one of the additional classrooms that we renovated on the first floor. Bottom-right is when you walk in through door number three, looking into the new STEM Wing. That's that corridor leading into the STEM Wing. And then obviously, this is kind of the coup de grace here. This learning stair is just a beautiful space, so obviously, when it's all cleaned up, it'll be beautiful as well, but it's a good one to look at. Top-left picture here, this is the computer science rooms 121 and 122. These rooms have a divisible partition that goes down the center. Top-right picture, that's room 119. That's a, just a standard science classroom. Bottom-left picture, that is the second floor. If you walked in off the balcony, that's the view that you'd see into the STEM Wing and the existing second-floor corridor. Bottom-right picture, that is walking, if you're walking in from the STEM Wing into the second floor on the south side into the existing building, that's a new tie-in point. So that's where the major part of construction was over the summer was, has been these tie-in points into the existing school. Next thing I'm going to talk about is bid release number five for RPZ and booster pump for the main water service. This is going to be contracted direct with the district. We've just done bid releases lately, so we just assisted with the full bid process. So this involved plumbing work, involves plumbing work and electrical work. We did put this out for public bid. We received three bids in each category. The low plumbing bid was 108,500, and the low electrical bid was 19,500. We went through, we did scope reviews with them. The next page has the bid tabulation results, so three bids in each plumbing-wise. Low bid again was 108, the next bid was 114, and there was another bid that was kind of in left field. And then electrically, had a bid at 19,500, another one at 22, so obviously, pretty close bids. It was nothing concerning there from a dollar standpoint. So again, this is our recommendation to award to Hill Mechanical on the plumbing side and Mini Electric on the electrical side.
Just a couple of things to add. So this, if you recall, this is part of the school maintenance grant that we approved a while back to apply for and receive. So basically, $50,000 from the state. So the project has to be over $100,000, which it is, to get that full $50,000 back. It's also part of the life safety audit that was done years ago that we're still plugging away with trying to address. So this is part of that also.
Next item is an item per the district's request. We were asked to price up the replacement of some existing galvanized water supply piping that goes down the corridors just outside of the STEM Wing addition. Obviously, kind of an opportune time to do that while we have that area closed. This wouldn't be an additional cost. This is basically being applied to the, would be applied to the project contingency, which has a healthy surplus right now. So again, this is, would be through the contractor doing the current plumbing work in the STEM Wing. They're familiar with all the lines, so again, this would be something for approval.
So this is an area that is flooded, it's in ceiling flooded repeatedly over time. There's a lot of clamps on this piping, maybe 14 or 15.
Right, hard to clamp.
Yeah, right. But it made sense, we thought, because obviously, the STEM Wing has brand-new piping, and also there's been some other areas by the auditorium, so it just made sense to try to at least get this stretch of piping consistent. And this is also part of the life safety projects as far as replacing galvanized piping throughout the building. Although that, this is obviously is not going to take care of all that, but it will take care of a stretch that's now going to be consistent.
Is that from the original construction?
Galvanized, yeah.
Yeah.
So this is on the first-floor hallway? Am I visualizing this right?
Yeah, right at the time where the auditorium, the auditorium basically, towards the south and then part of the corridor outside the 400, or is it, yeah, 400 classrooms.
Okay. Yeah, so it's all original building, piping, 1950s, galvanized, repaired multiple times?
And it's, yeah, it's, you know, we've had leaks during the course of construction, too, so.
I imagine it's galvanized piping all over the building, but why this particular portion?
Well, because right now, it's isolated, it's closed off construction-wise. So we, you know, we have ceilings open, it's kind of an opportunity, I guess it's, and that area of piping, we're tying into new, like, there's new supply piping that's getting tied into that, so it's kind of a good time to replace that, at least that area of piping.
So the short version of all this, because you're already tearing everything apart, you might as well do it.
That, and yeah, I think there's also a surplus in contingency on the project, so we have contingency funds that are available that could...
Money to spend.
Yeah. I mean...
And the board...
Available.
Yeah. And they're on site already. So that's one of the things that we heard from the board months ago, was that they're here, they can give you favorable pricing.
I mean, the ceiling's already torn out, and it's already exposed. Would it be foolish not to replace it?
No.
I mean, why pay gold? Why?
It'd be much more difficult to do it later on.
Do it later on.
More expensive.
And then to tie a new pipe in the old pipe, you got it, different metals, and oh, God.
Yeah, you gotta do it dielectric and junk.
Yeah, forget that.
No, I, I get it conceptually, but I guess sometimes I'd like to get a little reclamation.
Okay.
Okay, so again, that's going to be something that we'll vote on later in the meeting.
And that just has the quote from the subcontractor. This is basically showing the piping that's going to get replaced.
Yeah, makes total sense.
Uh, next item I'd...
Yeah, this is my item, so thank you, Brian. Appreciate your help and...
You've been a dog.
Okay. So this is a question about, we'd call it STEM Wing plaque. So for those of you that have been around large-scale projects, typically, there's some sort of a dedication plaque that is put up. In education, usually, typically, what you have with a plaque is you'll have the board members, when the project was approved, so that would be back with, I'll just call it the old board, the superintendent at the time, sometimes the principal, and then like, it would be like Gilbain and STR would be listed on there, too. I wanted to bring this to the board and for some discussion and some guidance as far as, you know, what we're going to do in this situation. You know, clearly, it's a unique situation, right? We have a brand-new board with three new board members. So that's, and obviously, we have a different superintendent. So basically, I wanted to open it up for discussion to see, do we go with what's typically done?
Typically done meaning?
Typically done would mean the old, the prior board, when the project was approved, Reid, would be on the plaque, and the superintendent, when the project was approved, the prior superintendent.
All right.
Clearly, there's flexibility here. That's a mock-up of the plaque, whether it's board member, superintendent, and on down the line. So I'm just going to open it up to get some feedback. We're not voting per se, it's not an action item, but...
I can give you my opinion right off the top. As far as the superintendent goes, you've been here through the whole project from start to finish in some capacity or under some sort, right? Okay, done.
Yeah, I've seen this done many ways and different places, and I would like, it started under one board, it's being finished under another board. It's not uncommon to see all the board members present and past listed. And we all know the difficulties we've gone through and the feelings of the community. I would like to just see us put something on there and thank you to all the administration, teachers, and staff members that contributed to the project, because somebody's always forgotten. I always felt it was unfair just to name a single person because that person didn't do it all. And I think it would be a much nicer statement to recognize all the administration, all the teachers, and all the staff that contributed. No one's left out, nobody's slighted, nobody can read into it something other than we're trying to thank everybody, because you listen to all the committee meetings we've had, all the input we've had, and everybody else. I mean, I just think it would be a little nicer and a little fairer to have a statement like that. Thank you to all the administration, teachers, and staff that contributed to the project. Thank you to the community that supported the project, and this is the board that started it, and this is the board that saw it through to conclusion. I don't know, to me, it's...
You're getting a pretty big plaque here.
It already is a big plaque, and it opens...
It's the STEM Wing, we're okay.
And it says we're dictating font. I mean, we could trim down the words, but I do believe all the staff and all the administration and all the teachers that have contributed time and input and design, I don't feel it's fair to exclude them. I mean, I think we could come up with some simple wording.
Al.
Go ahead, Reid.
Is that Latin for Ed Al, everything else?
John, I think you're, I agree with you, and I think it's a question of maybe reframing this to a dedication as opposed to a plaque of recognition, dedicating the wing to the students, to the staff, to the teachers in support of their work, and not naming any specific individuals.
No, I think we should name all the staff.
In fact, if we're going to name anybody, it should be the communities of Wooddale and Bensonville for their tax dollars.
And that's what I said, we should recognize the communities that supported it. You know, I don't think it's unfair to list the two boards that started it and that finished it. I think you all deserve as much recognition as the board that started it. There was a lot that went through, but I just think a simple statement, the communities, the community of Bensonville, the community of Wooddale, the teachers, staff, and administration that supported the project, and this, the board that started it, this, the board that finished it, we can adjust the font, we can turn it. I'm sure they can make that fit without any problem.
As far as, as far as the board members on the plaque, I mean, that was, majority of this project was under that, involved that board. I mean, so, I don't know, no offense to the new board members, but they came on kind of late in the game.
Well, you know, we could always list the board at the time of project and then the three board members that were at it. I don't care, we can finesse this any way we want. I have seen boards with both, I have seen fire districts and village halls and the start of the project, the end of the project. I just, I just like the idea of recognizing the communities that supported us, and all the staff, and all the administration, and all the teachers that had input into this.
Is that something that can be discussed during the, you know, during the presentation Is that something that can be discussed during the, you know, during the presentation or Kerry should give it, talk about it, right?
Right, there'll be a couple speakers, like I'm sure Kerry will speak, I'll speak, maybe a few other people.
You? It's a joke.
So, yeah, I mean, I'm just trying to get a, gather it all in and get other new board members have a...
I was just going to say, I agree with John completely.
Okay.
Recognize it in everybody, but you don't have to be specific if you don't need to be.
And I'm sure they can come up with a draft. I mean, I don't think it's, it needs to be an action item. I think we got to just give them direction, because the plaque's got to be done for dedication. We can't really drag this out. We got to kind of make a decision here.
Yeah, we could literally start working on it tomorrow, the wording on it. You know, we've got, we got Rick back there, we've got, we can put our minds together.
I bet you Rick's already got it done.
I think the plaque is going to be okay and all the other stuff John's talking about can be taken care of in the speech.
One last question, maybe with the three new board members. Do you have an opinion one way or another, whether you're listed on there or?
I do not care.
I do not have an opinion about it.
Okay.
It can go either way and I'll be fine.
Dr. McCullough?
I have a very strong opinion.
Okay, what's that?
I don't think that any names should be listed. I think it should be, as John referred to, the community, and I think that the teachers and students and staff should be acknowledged that this isn't in support of their dedication and hard work and continuing focus on exemplary teaching and learning.
Okay, so no board members, is that what you're?
I think John mentioned, correct me if I'm right, it was in addition to that, not necessarily either or.
Lead off with that statement, thanking everybody and then list the board starting, ending, or proceeded. I do believe the board should be on the plaque for seeing this through in some way it's chamberful. But I think the first statement should be thanking the communities of, thanking the teachers, staff and administration, and then not naming superintendents, principals, this person, that person, and then the board that saw this through. The board should be on the plaque. I've never seen a board not listed, but I think we could begin it with just that thank you to everybody, and this is the board that started it, this is the board that finished it, this is just all the board members that were involved from start to finish. We don't have to list titles, just everybody's name. These were the board members that were on at some point during the project. Don't have to list who the president is, the vice president, secretary, just these were all the board members, and that evens it out, makes it easier, just a flow of names.
This is just in part of the speech you're talking about.
No, I'm talking about the plaque.
No, the plaque, this is plaque discussion, this is not about the speech.
I was going to say, with the first portion, we could put a little more emphasis on it, whether that's font choices or whatever, you could put just a little bit more if you would like to with the community.
They could work their magic and dictate and finish the plaque. I just, I just, I always felt that people were slighted in the past. I think all the administration, all the staff and all the teachers contributed to this in some way.
Yeah, it sounds like we have consensus on that.
Couple of sentences at the bottom or something, you know?
I think they should be on the top, we thank them first, it's their building.
It sounds like, just if I could try to restate...
This thing turning into some kind of a outsized monster.
No, it's not.
Well, we'll have to, we'll scale it down.
It could be a brief statement of recognizing everyone. That can be crafted.
So it's that, who it's dedicated to, Bensonville and Wooddale community. Thank you to the staff, administrators, et cetera. Yeah, we can, we can work, work on that. That makes sense. No individual administrative names, that makes sense. I guess I would like, it seems like we got some differing views on the board members.
Before you finish, Sam?
Recognizing the board members who initially, well, voted to begin the project formally. Great. I mean, John suggesting to begin off acknowledging the, everyone else that somehow played a part, the administrators, the teachers and all, every community members, and great. But yourself and our former superintendent spent 10-plus years working here to put the school, put this district in a position to do not only the STEM Wing, but also the stormwater project in the back. And the changes that had to be implemented to put us in that position to do $47-plus million in construction here without raising taxes. The administrations, I'm not sure how many administrators were here during that time, but I know you two were, and to not have, not acknowledge the people who were upfront doing the work, putting the district in a position to do a project like this. That's the work that was done here on behalf of the students and this community. You guys, of course, there was a lot of unpopular, probably decisions through that time, but you guys saw it through, really. I mean, I was part of the board that initially, well, devoted on it to move forward with it, but I kind of feel Johnny come lately just like them. The groundwork was already laid, I just came at the right time. But you two were well front doing a lot of the work on behalf of the community and on behalf of the school district, and in my opinion, you guys' names should be up there for what you guys did in putting us in that position and being responsible with district and community resources over that period of time.
I don't think that names need to be memorialized. I think that the support of teaching needs to be memorialized. And I take a little bit of offense to the comment about not raising taxes, because that's not true. Every year, the district increases its levy and levies a new round of taxes. So the reality is the taxes do go up every year. Whether or not they're allocated to a specific project may be a question of debate, but I do think that the focus needs to be on memorializing teaching and learning and not individuals.
I don't want to get into semantics of taxes raised and what portion is for this and for that, but typically, it's the management of resources that got us here. Simply put, it's the management of resources.
Then we should put Bruce's name on it, then we should put Bruce's name on it, because he managed the allocation. So we can't name every single individual.
No, you can't. I agree with, I agree with what you said.
And I don't think any superintendent or principal should be named on this plaque. And if you want to strike the board members from it, I'm fine with that, we just make a dedication plaque. I'll take that stance, and I think we just have to have a thumbs up or thumbs down. What's the, what's four of us feel and what's five of us feel? I, I'm sorry, I'm going to stand pat on my original statement. Thank you to the administration, the teachers and the staff, and we're done there. No one's forgotten, everyone's named. Okay, well, let's put Bruce in there, he managed the budget. Let's put this person in there. Then we're going to have a plaque that's the size of a piece of plywood and it's going to mean nothing. And I'm not going to speak ill and I'm not going to say bad things, but there's been a lot of things that happened in this community in the last couple of years, and I'm sorry, it's not the first time I've seen names left off of plaques, because the end of the career was not the beginning of the career. And I'm only one and I'll respect the decisions, but if four of us say no, then no it is. If four of us say yes, I'll shut my mouth and we'll move on, and I have a clean conscience.
No, I think it's a good discussion, you know?
I agree, it's a good discussion. It needs to be had, but I'm standing pat on my...
No, I understand. Anyone else change their view or same view or?
Me, I think it's mostly okay, except for the stuff, there's acknowledging other people that's involved. If I understand your suggestion was not to name presidents or something?
No, no superintendents, no principals, no business administrator, just the administration, the teachers and the staff. No one's forgotten, no one's left out, nobody's going to...
I kind of get part of that, but I don't know about all of it. But anyway, I don't want to hold this up.
I defer to my other board members.
I have fear of what the community will respond with if we put certain names and how students will respond.
I concur.
That's my main concern.
I think less is more in this situation.
And I do believe the board members should be recognized if anybody does, and I, we don't need titles, just list all the board members, every board member that served on this board from the start of the project to the end. And that way, it takes up less space, you don't have to put titles next to it, just list us alphabetically, every board member that was on the board from the start.
It might be okay, because then you aren't addressing terms or anything.
We don't need to. These are all people, you saw this through to fruition to conclusion. I just, I do believe, it's very rare you'll see a dedication plaque where there's not the elected officials listed. I don't plan for on office, I want it to be done in a couple of years. But you know what, it was a long term and we did a lot, and we did it as much as, as well as we could, we stayed within our budget, we stayed within our means, and there's some disagreement on it, I agree with the levies, but anyway.
I got a question.
Yeah.
Is this thing still in motion a little bit? Is this something in a week or two?
No, I think we should decide now.
They got to decide, they got to get the plaque. Yeah, it's going to go on the wall next month.
So we're deciding, are we going to go deciding on a couple of options or are you going to?
No, I, no, I just, what I'm hearing is we're not going to put individual administrators on there, which is fine with me.
I thought there might be a couple of days to circulate a draft among the board, this is like...
Well, I, I mean, the time is sort of the essence. I mean, I think, I think we can have an opinion here tonight as board, not we, but you guys as, you guys as board members have opinions, and I think we respect whatever the majority comes up with. It's, so no individual administrative names. I think the dedication, obviously to the communities, I like that concept, this is dedicated to them. I think we could just put Board of Education members and...
Alphabetically, everybody.
List them alphabetically, yeah.
No titles, no terms, and then you can just go right across.
I don't think terms ever went up.
No, no, they didn't, but I've seen some weird ones.
Yeah, we have some flex, we could just put board, all board members. Are we good with that or?
Could we take a straw vote of board members who want names listed and board members who do not?
What, whose names? Board members' names or other?
Right, it sounds like that's the debate now.
That is, right.
Right. So I think we should go around the table and just disclose our opinion on that and see where it lands.
See where it's at, okay.
If board members, board members' names are going to be on the plaque.
No, no, not board members, others, right?
My understanding was individual board members.
We're at board members now.
I think we're done with other. I mean, do we want a straw poll on other? I mean, we can do a quick straw poll on other, but it seemed like the consensus was no others, just board members.
Right, so my, that's where my question is. I'd like to go around and, yes. And then by board members, just to be clear, we're referring to past and present.
Yes, yes.
Yep, past board, current, anybody who's served on the board from conception to conclusion.
Understood.
I want us all on the same page too.
Yeah, I agree.
Leo, can you start?
You want to start with me? I'm fine. You know, Bensonville historically has been in the roots like a Fenton, Johnson, and they were greatest. They were the greatest because they were the source in this community. And we are really glad because we follow their education, their dreams. We are living their dreams. Their dream was, probably you guys are not familiar, the high school over here, it was so small, it was only two rooms. But this guy, he was dreaming high. So it was Mr. Johnson. They dreamed high. And unfortunately, they didn't see that. But we are living their dreams. And to me, I believe it's really necessary to name those who actually lived that situation over here. It was not easy. It was hard, because we here, over here and that, we here out of the streets, and they were pointing at us. So I believe it's really necessary to name those board members, because they were heroes and whoever was involved in that. And we want our kids to live our dream, because this is my dream, this is your dream, and I believe the teachers are on the same page. They want the dream for other kids, because they are not living over here. Our kids, they live over here, but this is a moving village. Some of them are, they are studying kindergarten, they don't finish by school. So let her live our dream. Our dream is for better education, go for it.
I concur with what Leo just expressed. I think the names should be listed.
Yeah, I think the board members' names, all of them, should be listed.
Yeah, I think it's just, yeah, how to format it, if alphabetical, kind of levels of playing field and...
We'll figure it out.
Yeah, list the names alphabetically.
I concur.
No.
Okay. Okay, all right, I really appreciate the time and the thoughtful discussion on that topic, so we will take that and move forward. Next topic, land cash donation IGA. So this was previewed at one of our finance facility meetings, but basically, there's an apartment complex that's being developed in Wooddale. It's not projected to have many high school students, in fact, they project maybe three high school students, but at the same time, part of this agreement does guarantee some funds coming to Fenton from the developer, $21,000, just over $21,000. If we can get this approved tonight, we will see that money in August or September. The project itself, you can see a depiction of it as well as, they're going to break around in September, completed in two years, it's about 150 units. The other part of this is, they, we will get like an annual reimbursement based on the actual number of students. It's smaller, it's not 21,000, but it's a small amount, yes.
Well, that was my, I was looking at this agreement. Who wrote this thing? Is that, was that NFT or was it their guy?
No, it was, it was their guy. The other district involved, the Wooddale district has signed off on it. We ran it past our legal and we made some changes to it. The main area where there were changes is, we don't want any liability unless it's up to that amount of money that they gave us, like having some go wrong litigation of some sort. We obviously don't want to be involved in that, but maybe, you know, some of the funds that they provided to us. So it's been vetted by the attorneys. There isn't a lot of wiggle room, because there is, like, they have guidelines as far as what they do in this type of situation in Wooddale. So this was not a situation where I can bargain with them and say, hey, can we get some more money? I mean, it's a pretty flat impact fee.
Well, there's $21,000, which is based on some kind of a calculation, standard calculation. But this thing goes, this term is, I mean, I'm looking at this, it starts with 12 months and then it goes for an additional 12 months. Notice in the last 60 days, given a notice to any party to cease participation or until like cities land grants or, you know, I tell you from a layman's position, I don't, I don't get that. Does that mean they got to pay us $21,000 almost every year?
No, it's a single time when it first starts. But let's say all of a sudden...
Otherwise, they're going to get dinged for property taxes anyway.
Well, if the TIFT is up, this is TIFT, we're at least getting something, otherwise we're getting nothing. It's an undeveloped lot.
Yeah, right, and it's a tip, if you trust them early, you don't get anything, right?
We won't get anything for 18, 20 years, but at least we're getting something, which is better than a sharp stick.
All right, so you get $21,000 the first year and then what?
Again, it's per pupil, so it depends. It's, it's not, it's not a lot, maybe it's not...
Is this Wooddale paying or?
Yep. I don't...
I mean, who's funding you up the dough here?
It's not our problem, is it?
Yeah, I mean, we...
I'm interested in knowing how this flows, this is a very...
Well, I could, I don't want to say, I could, I could research that and get, and send it out to the board. I don't think that's a determining factor, but I understand your desire to understand who's...
I mean, I think, this looks like this is attorneys of a...
Well, this is between us and Wooddale, it's an intergovernmental agreement.
No, 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 I understand that, but I, the attorneys have looked at it, but I... No, 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 I understand that, but I, the attorneys have looked at it, but I think then after that, it's just been kinda pushed through the paperwork. I get it in concept again, but we're gonna get $21,000 the first year, which is fine, but the agreement goes forever, but it doesn't sound like we're getting any money beyond that. I'm just not sure how this thing works.
Yeah, they, they...
I don't know that it's gonna hurt Fenton in any way.
Beyond that, it's based actual, on actual number of students enrolled.
I'm sorry?
There's a dollar figure put on the actual number of students enrolled. So if we get 20 students, we get more money. If we get one student, we get less money, but at least we get something.
Does that mean if 10 people, if 10 people come from that project, do we go back and get more, send them a bill?
They, we have their address, it's all figured out. If their address is 372 North Wooddale Road, we have 10 students from there, that year we get money for 10.
So you send, so you send the bill to Wooddale and they pay the difference? Is that what we're talking about?
Nobody knows. No, no, I, well, hold on a second. We will get funds by the actual students that are enrolled here. It's not 21,000, it's a, it's a smaller amount per pupil. I don't have that in front of me, but that is part of this agreement with Wooddale that we would get that. 150 units total, more than half are studio and one bedroom. Now, I'm not an expert on apartments, but I know enough to know that typically, you're not gonna get a lot of high school students in the studio or one bedroom, and that's more than half of them. So if it's like a three bedroom or, you know, you're probably, have a higher probability of, of having more residents in a newly constructed luxury, and I, they gave me that term, I don't know what that is, but it's a luxury apartment building, so...
You know, this is clearly to the benefit of Fenton and I get that, but on a, conceptually, I think it's an agreement that hasn't been, you know, fully explained and its implications, that's really where my...
I respect that.
And I don't trust attorneys, so, all right.
I think, I think what we're, what we would run into if we don't approve it is, then we have to wait another month to, and I, I believe there should be enough information to, to make a decision on this, but I mean, I'm just bringing it to the, to the board, so. Any other questions?
At least three students do not get enrolled, do we have to pay back?
No.
No, it's 21...
No, good question. This money comes to us no matter what. So we could have, we, yeah, we could have zero students for five years and they don't claw that back in any way. Doug, I know you're relatively new and I don't expect you to answer any of these right now, but can, can you help me research exactly what that amount would be?
Yes, I can look through the IGA.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
I don't feel that would be like a deciding factor for, for this.
No, nothing for me.
Piece of land, we at least get something.
Yeah.
But, but I think it's, you know, it's, it's a good question and I don't have the exact answer, so I think I, probably after the fact, but at least I could clarify that.
Maybe since once you get it, send it out to the board as a whole. FYI, this is a dollar amount per student.
Yeah, I can do that.
Just any weekly updates.
Yeah.
That'd be wonderful.
Okay, so we will vote on that later. Rick Cambick is now coming to the podium. His annual community report, it's that time of year where we send this out to the community.
We have student achievements, staff achievements, we've got innovative programs going on in the classrooms and district updates that occur all throughout the year. It's a long school year, August to now, and we just recognized a student in July, even though the school year ended in May. So every summer, we put together kinda a year in review, so we take all of the accomplishments from throughout the year, package them together and give everybody a celebration all at the same time, recognize everybody, one last hurrah before the next school year starts. We're anticipating it arriving in every residential house August 14th to kinda rev up for the next school year. It also makes for a great handout when we have guests or partners or any kind of public event, that we just hand this out and say, this is what we're capable of, this is what we believe in, this is what we're striving towards, you should be with us. So we started last year making a Spanish version in association with the English version. So if you look at the front, this is English, flip it over and it's upside down, but if you flip it over, you're reading left or right, no matter what language you're in. So it ends in the middle. Once you get to a page where it's upside down, you know you're done. But that saves the cost and allows us to make sure that every residential home has English and Spanish and do it all at the same time. So we're gonna go to the next slide, I'll give you a couple of examples, 'cause boy, there's a lot of great stuff that happened this year. I got a little cheat sheet here as well. I break down the pages based on academics, district updates, staff achievements, student achievements, extracurriculars. So on this one, we've got new scholarships through our Fenton Foundation that we've done in partnership with the Bensonville Fire Protection District, Wooddale Fire Protection District, and the two firefighter unions associated with them. And two students received scholarships because they're studying emergency medicine, first responding, public safety, and that's a great partnership for us to have with other stakeholders in the community for the benefit of our students. So it's a great thing to tell the community that we've done and possibly recruit somebody else who may wanna create a scholarship or a fund balance to benefit our students. Nope, go back. So we also list all of our students who have state and national recognitions. We feature some of our new programs, like the Future Ready Fenton Day, so the top left is an airplane. That was a new program created by Michelle Papa Nicolau and Ms. Julia Bray and a lot of the other teachers, where we got all of our testing done, or most of our testing done, in one day, and then everybody else who wasn't testing got to go on a career track or go explore a college or university to kinda see a little firsthand what their futures could be. And that was a very innovative thing for us to do, and so why not brag about it? Make sure our community knows that we're taking new steps and innovative steps to inspire our students and give them something new to strive towards. We also had our incubator program, that's the bottom right. Business leaders in the community came and donated money and then helped critique and give feedback to our students who were learning how to make a business and then advocate for themselves and then possibly win money to create that business and operate it in real life. That's a very cool innovative idea. Let's brag about it, let's showcase the students who won and hopefully collect some more donations in the future. And then in the top right, we have Ms. Laura Veale-Petersen, who was featured on the floor of Congress back in January. She received a congressional commendation for her work that she does here at Fenton High School. We also had two teachers who were Golden Apple finalists. Coach Farrell was recognized by the Chicago Bears for his work. Obviously, we just saw Coach Mello was a Coach of the Year for softball. Our basketball coach Taft got his 300th career win, which is a big deal. And then on the next slide, our extracurriculars, our theater program continuing to rocket. We've got another state champion up top and a student who made it to fourth place. Group interpretation got third place in state, which was their best finish since 1979. Our contest drumming got a state championship for the technical aspect of doing their play, all the lights, the microphones, et cetera, so forth like that. Our soccer team got their third regional championship in four years, and Jocelyn Wade, way back in October, we recognized her here at the board meeting for being an all-state runner for the second year in a row. So we've got a lot of great accomplishments that happen, tie it all together, send it out to the community and make sure everybody remembers, and get all the kids on the same page for one last hurrah. So that'll be in all the homes approximately August 14th.
Any questions?
... accomplishments, and I wanna ask a question that doesn't diminish the significance of what's been achieved, but I am curious. What is the printing expense and the postage expense of doing this?
Printing is $9,000 and I think the postage was three.
Okay, so about 12K.
Approximately, yeah.
And it's a, is it a one-page flyer? Can you show us again, please?
Yep, it's literally 12 pages.
It's 12 pages?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so it's, okay...
And it's all Fenton High School. So we have the, every other month, we partner with the City of Wooddale and Village of Bensonville, and that's like three pages for each of the municipalities altogether, and this one is all just Fenton High School.
Do you have any idea how many homes will receive this that don't have students from Fenton or students who are in the pipeline to attend Fenton?
I don't, but it would be all of them.
Also, this is only going to homes that don't have students at Fenton?
No, this goes to every home.
To every home.
Yeah, and they're paying taxes too, they should know what they're paying for.
No, I understand. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else?
All right, thanks, Rick. Okay, the Dr. Douglas Wildes kind of budget.
Good evening, Dr. Benson and Mr. Lewis.
Let me finish my intro, it's now upon us. Okay, now you can go.
Very excited here, I apologize. Dr. Benson, Mr. Lewis and the rest of the board, here to present, give a brief overview, thank you, of the tenet budget for 2526. There's a much more comprehensive budget in the action items, it's a 27-page document, but over, over the course of the next few slides, we'll, we'll give some brief highlights of the tenet budget. First and foremost, these, there are some legal requirements for, through ISB that need to be adhered to. We need to make the budget available for public inspection 30 days prior to the adoption. We have to publish that notice as a public hearing, again, 30 days prior. We then have to host a public hearing. We'll do that at the beginning of the September 24th board meeting. Later in that board meeting, we will have a vote to adopt the budget. Next, we have to, by the end of September, we have to adopt the budget, post it to our website, and then by the end of October, which would be done immediately after budget adoption, we would need to submit this to ISB as well as the ROE as our adopted budget for 2526. So these are just standard requirements every year for the budget. Next item are a few of the factors that go into the 2526 budget and budgets every year. The fund balances that are carried over from previous years are put in, in place. Revenues collected, as we had talked about before, property taxes, student fees, state and federal government aid, grant aid, local revenues beyond what we're just mentioned, CPPRT, which is the personal property reimbursement tax from corporations, interest earnings, et cetera, and then expenditures that are, that are taken account for salaries, benefits, supplies, materials, equipment, capital improvement projects, et cetera, and then other factors such as long-term projections for student enrollment, collective bargaining agreements, things of that nature, as we continue to talk about additional capital improvements, and then also any trends that we're seeing in, in terms of revenue and expenditures over an extended amount of time. A little bit about the accounting that goes into state budgeting. This is a standard operation throughout all school districts throughout the state. You have nine major fund groups. The fund groups that are highlighted and italicized are what are considered the operating funds, so Fund 10, education, Fund 20, operations and maintenance, Fund 40, transportation, Fund 50, IMRF and social security, and Fund 70, working cash, are considered the operating funds of a district. There are other fund groups such as debt services, those are for payment back of, of bonds that have been issued, so the district has four outstanding bonds that, that we will, over the years, pay back. In addition, Fund 60 is for capital improvement. So a few years ago, we issued bond payments for the stem wing addition, we're making those payments down. That's not typically considered in the operating funds, because that's, year to year, sometimes we, we do not levy into that particular unless we, we issue a bond. Then Fund 80 and 90 are tort and fire and life safety. We have historically not levied money into those two fund groups, because we've paid for our tort, we've paid for our fire safety, those liabilities and those fire safety out of Ed Fund or O and M. Next, for the accounting purposes, we bucket all of our revenues into basically five major revenue groups. 1,000 is considered local sources, things like our property taxes, student fees, other fees that we collect, again, CPPRT, interest will go into a 1,000 revenue account. We have a 2,000 flow-through, which is, does not typically apply to us as well, but that would be a flow-through from one district to another. 3,000 are state sources, that would be EBF, evidence-based funding, state grants like, such as CTE drivers at transportation. 4,000 are federal, that's typically from our federal grants, like our National School Lunch Program, our Titles 1, 2, 3 and 4, Perkins and Medicaid. And then on occasion, when we do need to transfer money from one fund to another, we use 7,000 for transfer of funds. Yes, sir?
Quick question. The, the, the fund designations, 10, 20, 30, 40, whatever, and then the, these are the, yeah, right there, and then flip back, then the, the account definitions, those are, okay, those are all standard within the school district?
Correct.
Yeah, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, that's fine.
Okay. This is just a visual representation of what our revenues look like on a typical budget, and so this is our anticipated fiscal year 25 budget in terms of just a visual representation. So about 90% of our revenues come from local sources. That would again be property taxes, fees, et cetera. And then we have about 6% of our revenue comes from state sources, once again, grants and things of that nature, transportation, drivers, education reimbursements, and then about 3% comes from federal grants. So when, when we're talking specifically about revenues, just remember about 90% of Fenton 100's revenues come from local sources. Next, on the accounting side, we, we budget, or we, in terms of accounting, we bucket into what are called expenditure functions as well as expenditure objects. So we tie our expenditures into 1,000, which would be instruction, 2,000 support services, those are things such as counselors, social workers, administrators, people and supplies, materials, et cetera, that support learning, they're not directly in front of, of, in the classroom. 3,000 community service, things that we work with outside of Fenton 100 with, with other communities, payments to other government or district groups, so these would be things like outside placements, TCD, NedSec, et cetera. Debt services, when you're paying back debt, and then again, 8,000 when we're transferring money from a fund to another fund. Then you have a second layer with expenditures that are objects, salaries, benefits, purchase services, so we're, when we're hiring people that are outside, not necessarily Fenton 100 employees, to provide us a service within the district, people such as our food vendors, et cetera. Supplies and materials that are, are paid for, for providing either instructional or support services within the classroom or outside of the classroom, again, capital outlay, capital improvements, other objects that kind of don't fit into any of those object fund groups, non-capitalized equipment, that is, equipment that is between $500 and $5,000 individually, would fall into a 700 object, and then any termination benefits that we would provide. Visually, this is just taking a look at how we would pay, how we typically and historically, and then this, with this anticipated budget, how we would look at our expenditures just visually. About 50% of our expenditures are tied to the classroom itself, so instructionally, and then we have about 40% of our expenditures tied to support services for, for our students, and then we have about 3.8 million, or about 9%, a little over 9% of our expenditures are paid to, payments to others, again, such as outside services that, that we would provide to our students and staff. Then when we break it down by object, about 56, almost 57% of our expenditures are tied to salaries, another 12.5% are tied to benefits, so all in about, just under 70% of our salary and, of our expenditures are tied to salary and benefits, and then we have other breakdowns for purchase services, supplies and materials, capital improvements, et cetera. This is just tying back to, I know that Mr. Martin had, had presented the, sort of the end-of-year budget for the 2425 school year. As I mentioned earlier, this is something that factors into how we're going to budget for the 2526 school year, taking a look at sort of where we ended. We don't have a final audited budget from last year, we have annually in the fall, we have an outside group that audits all of our financials from the previous year, and they give us an audited financial report. So later in the, the school year, we'll have our auditing firm present our annual financial report that will show our full budget from the previous year. As Mr. Martin had presented, at the end of June, we had a slight surplus altogether when we tied down to the very bottom. If you notice, we had a, a transfer of money from some of our surpluses into Fund 30, which is our debt services, to pay our initial bond payments in early July. Just sort of the timing of how bond payments work, we pay bond payments twice a year, once early in July, and so we needed to move money from the Ed Fund where, where we had surplus to just pay our July bond payments. That's a typical thing that, that will be done on a yearly basis. Yes, sir?
I got some questions, I don't have all the details, but I remember... I don't have all the details, but I remember at one time, when we were looking at a budget, there was a $500,000 or so shortfall. Okay. Now, there was also some further conversation about, Bruce, that I recall having about, you know, trying to watch our expenses, you know, get under budget as far as expenses go, try to mitigate that, you know, somehow. Now, what I'm going to be interested in at some point is if we were successful in mitigating whatever the anticipated shortfall was going to be, and some idea of, when the time comes, how we think we're going to do the next time around. So I'll just leave those questions. I don't expect any answers at the moment, but I hope to, you know, follow up at all your time.
Yes, understood. And with this next slide?
I'm sorry.
Absolutely.
I'd like to share Reed's concern. And one thing I would be interested in seeing is a three to a five-year forecast. And then in addition to that, because of the timing of the comment, I'll go ahead and ask this now, if that's okay. Is the district taking any proactive steps to prepare for a reduction in the 10% that's relied upon from both state and federal resources? Because, you know, regardless of where one falls in the political climate, the reality is there is the potential for a reduction there. And some of that state money, of course, does come from federal money. So there's 10% that we don't know what the future holds. So what, I encourage you all to be thinking about mitigating to the greatest extent the reliance upon that money. If they're great, but if it goes away, we need to be prepared.
Yeah, good point. We kind of have preliminary discussion on that. Much of that money is grant-funded, like, things that we do that we value through grant funds. So we basically had to look, what are we doing through these grant funds? And what are our essentials? Like, we have to, we have to continue in what, perhaps, make a value judgment on those. So I concur with what you're saying, and we're prepared to do that based on being nimble in what happens and what we'll need to do. So it's a good point.
And then, Mr. Goodrich, to answer your question, some of those factors, and I'll present that in the next couple of slides, taking a look at where we ended in 2425. Made some adjustments for the 2526 budget. And then Dr. McCullough, I can absolutely put together a three- to five-year sort of forecast of where we look, where we see ourselves in those next few years, and I can put that as a later presentation. Thank you very much.
And just so you know, PMA kind of gave us something with the prior board, so we could at least get that out to the new board members so they can see it. And then you can continue to fine-tune it based on what you see also.
Yep. And then Dr. McCullough, the last part of your comments about the state and federal grant support, you'll see that in our 2526 school year. We're anticipating with some of the climate of what's going on, we're anticipating a slight decrease in those revenues, and you'll see that in future slides. So again, just tying back a couple of the highlights from the 2520, the 2425 budget, we did, again, make a transfer from the Ed Fund to Fund 30 to pay down debt services from bond issuances for the STEM Wing. We transferred 550,000 from working cash to transportation, the transportation fund due to some of those rising transportation costs. Of the project, the STEM Wing project, 21.7 million of it hit the 2425-year budget. We'll still have additional expenditures that will hit the 2526 school year budget, which are projected in the 2526 budget. Overall, revenues were, for local and state, were slightly higher than expected. And then, as we, Dr. McCullough had mentioned, federal revenues came in slightly lower than we had anticipated back in the early part of the 2425 fiscal year. On the expenditure side, salaries, benefits, purchase services, supplies, materials, were right at or slightly above, or I'm sorry, slightly under budget. So we did a very nice job, and the student staff and Dr. Martin, or Mr. Martin did a great job with managing all those. The one place where we did want to really focus was on those rising transportation costs and try to mitigate those for the 2526 school year. So again, a few of those budget drivers for this budget, we're projecting overall revenue increases to be about 3.4% with 4.6% in increase in local revenues through levy process. Again, to what Dr. McCullough had mentioned, we're anticipating slightly decreases in state and federal aid. Again, we're not quite sure what those will look like. We're doing a budget projection. We're not quite sure where it'll come back. But again, if you do recall, 90% of our revenue comes from local sources, and we're only relying about 10% on state and federal revenue. On the expenditure side, operating funds specifically, we're seeing a decrease in our expenditures for the 2526 school year. We have a slight increase in salary and benefits, but to mitigate the increase in salary and benefits, we did have some retirees, we did reduce our teaching staff, our FTE, which was presented at the end of the previous fiscal year. So that was an offset of some of our operating expenditures. In addition, due to those transportation costs, we made some slight adjustments to our transportation and our bus routing to decrease a few of our routes to try to get those transportation costs down for the 2526 school year.
Were we trying to get an agreement, or did we get an agreement with District 2 about sharing routes or something like that? Wasn't?
Yes, that's right. That is, that's part of it. Actually, we're going to reduce four routes.
Okay.
We did an efficiency survey, and so we can reduce the routes, which will save us some money.
Yeah, that's good.
Yep.
In addition, we'll have some decreases in our purchase services, capital outlay, and equipment. We spent a considerable amount of money in the previous fiscal year on purchasing those for the STEM Wing addition, so we'll have decreases in those for this fiscal year. And then finally, to help offset some of those transportation costs, we'll be transferring money again from working cash into Fund 40 to mitigate those anticipated expenditures. So this is what the tenet budget for 2526 will look like in a, kind of, a one visual summary. On the left-hand side are the nine big fund groups, and then at the bottom, the bottom two rows are the total funds and then operating funds at the very bottom. So on the left-hand side, we see Fund 10 through 90, operating funds, or total funds and operating funds. That left-hand column is what we're anticipating to be our fund balances, sort of the leftover money in each of the various fund groups. So in Fund 10, we have 17, we're anticipating about 17.1 million in positive fund balances there. And then as you continue to go down, you see the remaining fund balances in each of the funds. But typically, we look at it in total operating funds. So we don't necessarily look at fund by fund. We certainly can, but to keep it sort of on the high level, overall, we have a total operating fund balance of 25.4 million going into this fiscal year. So we have very positive fund balances on a $40 million operating fund, total budget, with having 25.4 million. We're in a very good place in, overall, in terms of operating fund balances.
Just, I know you talked about some increases and decreases on the other page, but I see revenues of 40 million, 31 and some change, and expenditures at 41 million, 229. Are we looking already at a deficit next year? Is that, how do I read that?
Right here. Projected.
Oh, that's too bad.
Well, to your point, Reed, and we had this discussion last year, that there was, last year, projected just over $900,000 deficit, so it's pretty similar. So...
It was about a 900 or a million, thereabouts, rounding.
Yeah.
And then Bruce did a little accounting magic, moved some money around, got it down to 500, and that's the last number that I remember.
Okay.
If I recall, right, I think we ended up with a small surplus.
A small surplus, right. We got a little bit of money there, right, like on June the 30th, a little more than we thought.
Okay.
And so we did end with a small surplus. So it's kind of the same concept, I think. We continue to be fiscally responsible. We, obviously, with our staffing plan, it was, we were down several teachers or staff. We had some retirees, I think. Collective bargaining agreements are already in the books, and we have to obviously work with those. But I think we're, I feel like we're in a similar situation where we were last year, that we were able to, you know, get close to even or even a slight surplus at the end, where we thought we were going to have a slight deficit, so.
Just, I'm only passingly familiar, I'm able to fund accounting, so if you don't mind. But, so for instance, we started out with a number similar to this last year, just for the sake of example.
Yeah, yes.
Bruce moved some money around. Okay. And so the number that sticks in my mind is, we were 500,000 short. Now, would you say when you had to come up with a surplus here at the end of the year, which is good news, all right, we clearly did something right in controlling our expenses, but is that based on the $500,000 number? Or does that actually recover and repay some of the money that Bruce borrowed from the bank account or another fund?
Yeah, I don't think I can answer that question.
Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yes. Yes. The hope is, we can't necessarily, as a district, we can't necessarily control the revenue.
Right.
What we can do is try to mitigate some of those additional expenditures.
No, because I'm trying to say, yeah, so if we came with a surplus, which is good news no matter, don't get me wrong, but does that just mean we beat the 500 number that we were left with?
Correct.
Or did we actually, you know, beat the $900,000 number that we started with last year?
Correct.
And that's what I'm trying to...
I think, I ain't going to say anything, if I'm correct, I was just plainly, the projections, well, we, they kept a hold or down of our expenses, but as it turned out, as the year went on, we ended up getting more than what we projected, and we were, ended up with a small surplus.
Yeah, but I just, I don't know what the benchmark is.
To control our expenditures.
We didn't have to draw on our resources.
We didn't have to draw on other resources.
So that means you didn't have to use that money that Bruce plugged in there then at the end of last year?
It was, there's a difference between moving around and, well, I'll let you explain.
The, we had to...
You know where I'm going with this, right?
Yes, I do, I do. And with, towards the end of last fiscal year in June, we received a little bit more revenue than we were anticipating.
Lucky.
We had some additional revenue that came in. And with that additional revenue, we were able to transfer some of the money to pay down, for example, the debt services and pay down some of our bond debt.
So anyway, okay, that's what I'm trying to get a little bit feel for what happened last year. I know what I was told. I'm just trying to say if we were, if we're ahead, which is good, I'm just trying to figure out where we're, we're ahead compared to what, you know?
The hope is, by June of '26, what we budgeted for revenue, we received slightly more than, the hope is we received slightly more revenue than we anticipated we were getting. And the hope is that for the budgeted expenditures were slightly less than those expenditures.
All right, and I'll kind of leave this comment, right, actually similar to what I said last year about this, the same processes. I hope we're very careful about how we spend our money next year.
Absolutely. So as you see, again, just going across the columns, and I won't spend a lot of time here with this, everybody could see that, we're anticipating the revenues coming in at the dollar amounts that they're at. These are projections based upon, again, levies and predictions of the revenue coming in on state and federal aid, as well as student fees, et cetera, et cetera, as well as on the column to the right for expenditures, what we're projecting for our instructional and salary benefits, supplies and materials, et cetera. And then that second to the right column is the difference, positive or negative. Where at this time, our tenet budget shows a slight decrease in our operating funds of about $850,000. Even if we do come in at that with revenue and expenditure, we have positive fund balances of almost 20.5 or a little over 24.5 million altogether. And so I wanted to show this with the board. In addition, I wanted to tie the next slide, just showing where our anticipated operating funds, our fund balances would be at the end of this fiscal year, where we'd have about 70% of our fund balances tied into the Ed Fund. And again, a little over, just under 10% in operating maintenance and, as well as in working cash, and then a little more than 10% in our IMRF. So when we look at, taking a look at the end of this fiscal year, we start talking about the levy in November and December. For example, we have some excess, some excess in the IMRF and Social Security Fund. We could potentially levy a little bit less in that fund, and we could steer some additional levy money towards something like transportation, for example. So this is sort of the ebbs and flows of the budgeting throughout the year, but these are factors that kind of go into when we're presenting and preparing our budget for the fiscal year. Next steps here are, again, if the board acts on this tenet budget, we will put it on display, we need to keep it on display for at least 30 days, and then at the September 24th board meeting, we'll hold a public hearing. After that public hearing, we will then have, later in that board meeting, the board will be presented the budget for approval. If the board approves it at that September 24th board meeting, we will then post it. It'll be an adopted budget for this fiscal year. We'll post it to our website and submit it to ISBE. Any questions?
Questions, Doug, and you might not have them, and I just thought of them, so I apologize. And you can get this to me next month, get it to Sam. Do we project any properties coming off of their TIF this year? I know we had some last year. Hey, that's big money if it happens, if the money develop, because that could help us with a lot of our concerns. And I can't remember when our next property comes off the TIF. I don't know if it's one year, two years, 10 years. And that was really my only question. I apologize.
Yeah, I can reach out to Wooddale and Bensonville and their assessors.
I think it's going to be Bensonville. I know we had one come off last year, and that's part of why we tended to what we did, because we were getting fresh new income. We didn't want to...
There was a couple, some...
Right. So I can't remember, because a lot of their stuff TIF'd at approximately the same time historically, if I remember. So I don't know if it's this year, next year, the following year, I mean, because that's a fresh source of income, depending on what it is, just if you could take a look.
Absolutely.
It's not earth-shattering. I just hope it isn't 10 years.
By the levy, again, in November, December, we'll have that information for sure.
I was just curious. I know you're new, so I apologize.
No, that's not a problem. Good question.
Couple to that, I think it's probably a good time, I know I'd like to educate myself on enrollment and population growth or decline in the district, within the district boundaries. So that's something we should probably look at, just in preparation. When I see a deficit, I don't like it. And I think it's a good opportunity for me to learn more about what's going on in our district.
Every year with the audit, we also get enrollment projections from actuaries, and so I'll have that information. If it's okay, I can get that information within the next week or two, I can reach out to our actuary. If not, I can, it'll be presented during the AFR.
That'd be great. I'd love to have it earlier.
Okay.
The two to three weeks, if you don't mind.
Not a problem.
Sam, if you recall, I guess before the new members came on, you guys did a projection of future enrollment over the next three to five years, and it was, it was expressed to us there was to be an expected decrease with each coming year over the next three to five years in students?
Yes.
Yeah.
I know surrounding districts are having a decrease as well.
Yeah, it's pretty common.
So that's where the projection come from, is based on, you know, the feeder districts.
Yeah, and we can get those actual numbers, or perhaps updated numbers, and we could share that with the whole board.
Yep.
So that presents a dilemma, too. And not only are the enrollment numbers important, but so too are the number of residents and businesses within the boundaries for taxpaying purposes.
Correct.
So what's, we want to know what's happening there. Is there growth? Is there decline?
Absolutely.
Because then that 90% could be getting whittled away a little bit, too.
Correct.
I believe businesses are not decreasing, it was just students. I believe businesses are not decreasing, it was just students. Because I was talking to some of the fire guys in the past life, and this comes up regularly, especially for a fire district. I don't think there was any real decrease in businesses. I think there was some increases in businesses, but unfortunately, those are in the TIF districts. So it's going to take time for us to get it, but that's a whole other thing we could deal with, but at least we know in the long run, the businesses are up. I haven't seen a lot of vacancies, I drive around a lot in the course of my job, I haven't seen a lot of vacancies, I hadn't seen a lot of fore rents, I've seen some of the older buildings actually being redeveloped. These are all positives, I think on that 90% side, we're going to be okay. It's the enrollment that, where that, that downfall, it seems like we, if I remember, we historically have these ebbs and flows.
Yeah.
The age out of the population and so forth, I mean, we're just in that downward trend at a bad time.
And the county assessors will take a look at the EAV, the equalized assessed value, they'll take a look at tax rates, and, and they do a lot of that manipulation with, with that information, but I can provide that as well.
Please, and please keep us informed about that, because I don't want to, I don't want to think about what's possible, I want to know what's happening.
Understood, understood.
Yeah, and Dr. McCullough, I do meet Wooddale and Bensonville with the, the city leaders typically monthly, so I can try to get a feel for how our business is doing, are they growing? I'll occasionally hear like, there's a new In-N-Out burger or something like that, but a more comprehensive assessment from them, how, how that's going, I could pass that along once we, the meetings start occurring again.
Not grateful, it's not bad news.
Okay, I think we're moving on, we good?
Good.
Okay, I think we're moving on. FLOS MOA, this is going to come up again later in the meeting. Basically, we have been in, having some discussions throughout the year with our FLOS group, so basically, this is the union of, of support staff. So if you think of teacher aides, clerical, those, those types of staff members have a union. And we had a collective bargaining agreement with them, and part of that was to have these periodic labor management meetings. And so that's what we did last school year, and what we'd been talking through is the concept of when we hire someone for these positions, where do they start out at? And according to the contract that was, that was ratified, we can go up to step six on the salary schedule. So the concept is, you can't hire someone that's brand new at like step 20, even though they may have 20 years of experience. This is pretty common, and we're basically doing this throughout all of our employee groups, where, where we watch this. But that's based on skills and prior experience. Prior experience is pretty easy to determine, skills is a little bit different, but it's, so it's both of those. So what we've been doing through these discussions, I want to, I want to thank Jose, because what he's been doing is meeting with the FLOS president or a representative, and when we're about to hire someone, we will let them know, this is the step that we're going to hire them at. So we, we basically have been doing this process, it's an extra step, but what it does, it's sort of that added communication that's been helpful, because what would happen is, without that communication, you may hire someone from the outside and maybe you give them X number of years' experience. And what, what happens is they find out quickly, you know, what did you do, how many years did you, and then all of a sudden, there's questions coming after the hire, and it's like, let's just have this discussion in advance. Not, not here to say that every time it's going to be smooth, but the last few Jose's worked through with the union president, and there, there's some mutual respect there on both sides. So I would ask that the board signs this. Basically, we've been following this. I told the FLOS group that it's not officially in effect until the board signs off on it, but I, I believe it's, it's a good idea to, no, my recommendation is to approve it later in the meeting, but that's really the main part of the agreement, and we've attached the agreement to the board book. If you have any other questions.
Is there a formula for the, under step six, how the skills and prior experiences are determined?
Uh, no, not really. You mean combining the two?
Well, combining the two or whatever.
Yeah, I mean, really, it's, it's primarily the experience, you know, you may find someone with quite a bit of education or quite a bit of customer service type skills, and how valuable is that for the position you're hiring for? And so, the experience is the simpler part, the skills is something different. I think for the most part, Jose, in Jose's discussion, it's been more about the actual experience, and does the experience equate to the position that you're being hired for? You know, the, the classic example is a security person. Now, not everyone is necessarily in security per se, but some are, and that's an easy one. If you hire a police officer that's in security, that's a pretty easy one to, to equate. But there's no specific formula, and when we worked through this, that, that didn't, didn't come up as a, as an idea.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure. Okay, and then nothing is other, so we can continue with the consent agenda.
May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Can, can, can you please hold for just a moment? Okay, thank you.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Matu?
Yes.
Figaro?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Radzinski?
Yes.
Goodrich?
abstain.
McCullough?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay. Come on, hit the button. Let's move on to discussion action items.
May I have a motion that the Board of Education approves HYA and Associates to run the superintendent search process for the 2026-2027 school year?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I just want to put on the record that I do think that there are some other individuals within HYA that can be very beneficial to us as a school district, and I, Sam, I appreciate your willingness to, to explore that. So thank you, Dr. Benson.
Roll call.
Goodrich?
This is for A?
This is for A.
Yes.
McCullough?
Yes.
Radzinski?
Yes.
Matu?
Yes.
Figaro?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes, motion passed. May I have a motion that the Board of Education approves the land cash IG and a government agreement between Fenton and the City of Wooddale?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Miller?
Yes.
McCullough?
Yes.
Radzinski?
Yes.
Figaro?
Yes.
Matu?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Abstain.
Lewis?
Yes, motion passed. May I have a motion to the Board of Education based on the bids received for the RPZ slash backflow preventer and booster pump bid release number five? Recommend awarding a contract to Hill Mechanical in the amount of 108,788 dollars for the plumbing package and mini electric in the amount of 19,500 dollars for the electrical package. The total recommended amount of the base bid for the project, for this project is 128,288 dollars.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
McCullough?
Abstain.
Goodrich?
Yes.
Radzinski?
Yes.
Figaro?
Yes.
Matu?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes, motion passed. May I have a motion that the Board of Education approves Gil Bane owner change order number five, ATP 0028 replacement, replace existing galvanized water supply piping in corridors in the amount of 47,259 dollars?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Give me one moment, I'm so sorry. Okay, Figaro?
Yes.
Radzinski?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McCullough?
Abstain.
Matu?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes, motion passed. May I have a motion that the Board of Education approves the 2025-2026 tentative budget as presented and placed on public display in the district office? It is further recommended that the board schedule a public hearing at 7:00 PM during the regularly scheduled meeting on Wednesday, September 24th, 2025, prior to adoption of the final budget.
Marshal? Second.
Roll call.
Miller?
Yes.
McCullough?
Yes.
Goodrich?
No.
Matu?
Yes.
Radzinski?
Yes.
Figaro?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes, motion passed. May I have a motion that the Board of Education approves the motion of FLOS memorandum of agreement as presented?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. So, I'll just share with the board, I'm going to vote no on this, because it puts both parties in a difficult situation, having subjective decisions to be made about what qualifies for the various steps. And in the interest of protecting both sides, I think it's very important that there's some objective way of determining what experience is and what experience is fit. So I just want you to know why I will be voting no, it's not out of the interest of trying to disadvantage anyone, or that I don't trust somebody in being able to do this. It's simply because I think it puts both parties in a difficult situation potentially.
Miller?
Yes.
McCullough?
No.
Matu?
Abstain.
Radzinski?
Yes.
Figaro?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes, motion passed. Come on. Phew, may I have a motion that the remaining April 2025 press policy updates as presented? 6/235, 7/270, 4/120, 6/310, 8/30, 5/100, 6/150, 7/10, 7/50, 7/60, 7/70, 7/200, 7/210, 7/250, 7/255, 7/340.
Is that it?
Yes.
Just trying, I'll, I'll make the motion.
Second.
Phew, any discussion? Roll call.
Miller?
Yes.
Radzinski?
Yes.
Figaro?
Yes.
Matu?
Yes.
McCullough?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Abstain.
Lewis?
Yes, motion passed.
And for those following along on the agenda, I wanted to say that there is an agenda item of disposal of assets. However, Jose, would you like to explain why we're going to skip that tonight?
Yeah, so next month, we're going to provide a more comprehensive list of all the things that we'd like to bring to the board. So, as opposed to having multiple lists throughout a couple of months, we're going to provide a more comprehensive list next month.
So basically, this is equipment or whatever that's obsolete, that's?
Been in storage, that's been sitting there, that has just been taken.
Does this mean you're going to salvage it, or you're going to put it up for internal sale, or? Um, we'll follow, yeah, it'll be a disposal as process.
Yes, you could, for, for any items that might have value, you can put them up for auction, anybody that would like to purchase them, they can, and if, if there's nobody that?
I remember an old discussion like this, there was an issue about old computers, but the idea was they didn't want to sell them or get, because next thing you know, they were going to, people were going to bring them back and say, well, it's not this, or what's this? Right, right, right. You know, so there was some, some decisions being there.
It's all as is.
As is, okay.
Typically, anything with student and staff information is not, is not going to be resold, it's going to be properly disposed.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Okay, that, that's it.
Does anyone have any committee reports?
Bensonville Foundation meets tomorrow, I believe Mike and I are both going to be there, there are several items on the docket for reviewing consideration. Actually, we just got four more the other day, so we'll be reviewing them and taking action tomorrow. Solid foundation.
I plan on attending also, just, yeah, the audience, yeah.
We're not worthy. Thank you.
Sure.
Make sure I put on a clean shirt.
I guess tie too, huh?
Oh, hell no. Summer, no, bite your tongue, sir.
There is no NEDSEC meeting in July.
Okay. All right. Our next board meeting is Wednesday, August the 27th, 2025, at 7:00 PM with a tentative finance facility meeting scheduled at 6:00 PM prior to regular meeting. Also, tentatively stamped, stamp wing ribbon cutting is August the 14th at 5:00 PM, I believe that's a Thursday.
Yeah.
Oh, yes, Thursday, yes. May I have a motion and a second to go into closed session for the following? A, 5 Illinois CS 120 slash 2 C1, the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of Fenton Community High School District 100. B, 5 Illinois CS 120 slash 2 C2, collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees, or their representatives, or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Who seconded, I'm sorry?
I, I seconded, sorry.
Thank you. Okay, Radzinski?
Yes.
Matu?
Yes.
Figaro?
Yes.
McCullough?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Close session, Reed, yes, no?
Close session.
Close session.
Yes or no?
Yes or no?
Yes?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
There would be no action items after closed session. We're in closed session. We're in closed session. And a second to go back into open session.
Motion.
Second.
And discussion, oh, roll call.
Here.
Here. Don't play, here.